All right. Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee Meeting. In attendance today, we have, of course, myself, Chair of the Committee, representing the 4th District, Councilman Burnett, representing the 8th District, Councilwoman Porter, representing the 10th District, and Councilwoman Ramos, representing the 14th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Okay. All right. And Representative from the President, I've got... Got it, got it, got it. And we have Representative from the President's Office. We do not. All right. And then Representative from the Mayor's Office, I've got Sophia G. This afternoon, the Committee will have a hearing on Bill 22-0255, Arson Offender Registration, for the purpose of requiring an individual who has been convicted of a specified crime to regularly register certain information with the Police Commissioner for Baltimore City, specifying location, timing, content, and form of the registration, defining certain terms, and generally relating to arson offender registration. This bill was introduced on 7/25/2022, and it was sponsored by Councilman Burnett, and I'll turn it over to the sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. So, we heard this bill last year at some point. It's kind of a blur. But to just recap, we've had, both in my district and other parts of West Baltimore and throughout the city, frankly, a spate of repeat arson incidents. I would say the Evansville Chauvin Center probably fits into that, but there was a lot in West Baltimore over the last few years. And what we've found in sort of learning more about arson is that there's usually, like most acts of violent crime, there's a small number of individuals that are repeated offenders. And so, there's a... We basically took the similar version of the gun registry that we already have, and have a proposal to create a arson registry. So, if there are... The original version of the bill, if there's one incident, you would have to register. We had a lot of conversations with the Police Department about this particular bill, and so I can walk through the amendments, most of which are technical, but two are substantive and sort of reflective of those conversations.
Sure, let's do that.
So, the... And everyone should have received these this morning. But the amendments, 1, 2, 3, are all technical amendments. Number 4 is in conversation with the Police Department. There was a recommendation that there be multiple offenses before having to register, which we agreed with on that end. And I'm happy to let BPD sort of talk to why on that, if they'd like to. But that was where that... That's where that bill, I mean, this amendment originates from, as well as number 5, where it initially, the onus was placed on the Commissioner. We just cleared that up to make it a designated Commissioner. And then we also changed the effective date per conversations with BPD. The original version of the bill said 30 days. Thought they needed more time for the establishment of it, and so we are proposing a six-month implementation date. Those are the amendments that we have to this. That would really be the only substantive change since our last conversation. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question for the sponsor. On the amendment, you said Amendment Number 4, instead of it being one offense would be where the person has to be on the registry, it would be... It looks like it's a second.
A second offense, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And what was the reasoning behind that?
I think that there was concerns that small incidents could be, like setting a trashcan on fire, like the sort of light incidents, wouldn't necessarily necessitate having to register. But if you were habitually doing something like that, then I think that sort of shows a pattern of behavior. And I'll let... I see our Deputy Commissioner.
Yeah. Basically, what would happen if someone, let's say, a younger person, lights a trashcan on fire, gets charged as arson, they would have to register. Where if they have the first offense, we can give them their parameters for the second offense. Second offense, you're going to be registered to this arson registry, and here's all the different things you're going to have to do. Without that, they have no idea that the registries there until they get charged with the first one. So, the second offense gives them basically one chance, and then you get put on the registry.
Okay, thanks. I mean, I appreciate that. Obviously, I'm super sensitive to this, just given what happened in my district, in my neighborhood last year. And so, trying to make sure that... I mean, this is an extremely important registry to try to, you know, actually go back in history and try to figure out, you know, who's doing these kinds of things. Because that case has not been closed. So, as I understand it. So, that's a big issue for me. But I appreciate that, so thank you.
Any other... First, I want to acknowledge Councilman Cohen during the hearing. Any other questions? I'll turn it over to the Solicitor's Office, if there are.
Hillary's here. Sorry, yes. The Law Department approves the bill with the amendments for form and legal sufficiency.
Excellent. Thank you. And for the Police Department, anything else to add to... Okay. All right. Any further questions? All right. I'll entertain a motion for the bill, to move the bill.
For the amendments.
For the amendment. Excuse me. I'll entertain a motion to move the amendments.
So moved. Second?
All right. Moved by Porter, seconded by Ramos. And I'll entertain a motion to move the bill as amended. Oh, excuse me. Conway, yes. Burnett?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
All right. The amendments are approved. Entertained a motion to move the bill as amended.
So moved. Second?
Moved by Porter, seconded by Ramos. Conway, yes. Burnett?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
And Ramos.
Yes.
All right. We will move that bill to second reader on our next council meeting. And that... That will move on to our next bill. The... That bill's in recess. The Committee will now hear Legislative Oversight, 22-0030, Legislative Oversight, Crime Reduction and Violence Prevention, for the purpose of committee holding regular hearings with the Police Department, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement, and other agencies to monitor the progress of the city's crime reduction and violence prevention efforts. This bill is sponsored by myself, and, you know, looking forward to getting into a conversation. It's got a lot of questions and otherwise about where we are with our crime fighting strategy, especially with GVRS, which we're going to have put a special focus on today. And with that, I will turn it over for the order. Would you like to go first, Director, or do we want to have the Police Department go first?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To the extent that the Committee would like for BPD to go over their general crime statistics, it makes sense for them to go first. The Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, BPD, and the State's Attorney's Office will be co-presenting on GVRS.
Excellent. Okay. So, I'll turn it over to the Police Department.
Good afternoon again, everyone. I'm Deputy Commissioner Rich Wurley, of RC Operations. Basically, we're just going to go over where we stand. We'll start off with the clearance rates in homicides and non-fatal shootings. It's actually going to be the slides that we had.
Oh, those?
Yeah, it's a different set of slides. Those are the Monsey slides.
These are the Monsey.
They're at the...
There we go, right there. There we go. So, we start off with the homicide clearance. You'll see that those numbers are relatively low. Those numbers were pulled from our AXON RMS system, which usually is... Not usually, is always lower because it requires the case to make its way through the processing. The actual homicide clearance rate today is 40% compared to 48% last year. Non-fatal shootings are 28% compared to 27%. The robbery numbers are pretty much the same. You'll see the burglaries were up over the national average, and the rapes are up from last year, but still below the national average. And then next, you move on to the arrests. You'll see our narcotics investigations and violations are up. This is one of the first years that we've actually made more narcotics arrests than we did the previous year. So, we have 528 handgun violations. When we wrote this, it was 498. They're even a little higher now. Robbery arrests, 142. Attempted murder arrests, 57, and murder arrests, 33. Then we move into the gun-related arrests by district. You'll see, even though we did an excellent job last year, and men and women are doing even a better job this year, our gun arrests for this year are up 4.3%. Already this year, we have 509 gun arrests compared to 488 last year. The majority of those, as you can see, but the middle document is the gun arrests through patrol. 476 of them are from our men and women working patrol. Our non-patrol units are down slightly. That's mainly because there's a lot less people in the non-patrol units than there previously were. Those units aren't quite as heavily staffed, and plus, we consolidated some units back into patrol. You'll see the Central District leads the way with 91 handgun arrests this year compared to 86. The big difference, if you look at the Eastern, 76 compared to 26 from last year. So, those are the ones that are making a really good stride, but everyone is doing an excellent job with the gun arrests. Move on to the citywide crime overview. You'll see the homicide rates. I'll even give you a more updated one. Today, we are down 21%. We have 94 this year compared to 119 last year. And our non-fatal shooting rates, they're down about 15%, 208 compared to 242. And you'll see our carjacking arrests, that's a huge number right there. It's a 30% decrease in carjacking arrests compared to last year. Even though we still have our issues with the carjackings, the men and women out there have done a fabulous job with the carjackings. Commercial robberies are up slightly, but our overall robberies are down almost 15%. The one area that still, not just plagues us, but plagues the entire country, is stolen autos. The two brands of autos that are being stolen quite naturally and quite easily are basically the same thing throughout the country. They've done some things with us, distributing locks and things like that to help. So, we're hoping that that has a key. But the stolen auto numbers you see are what's driving our property crime. Then we go into the homicide districts, homicide totals by district. You'll see we have some really good progress in the Northwest District, only five homicides. The Northern has six. We are struggling in a few districts. You can see the Northeast has 13, the Northwest... I mean, the Northeast has 13, Western has 15. Southern is doing really well, down 50%, 24 last year compared to 12 this year. And you move into the non-fatal shootings, and we have a few issues with a couple of districts, but for the most part, they're evened out. We have... We're struggling a little bit in the Northeast, but we're doing, again, we're doing really well in the Southern, and a couple of other districts are doing well. Southwest is doing well, Western is down a little bit. Western's down a little bit, even considering the historical decreases we had last year. And then we go into the domestic and youth violence. You'll see the domestic violence, homicides are down 66%. Look at the rest of them. Most of them are up slightly, but the big one is the homicide. Carjacking and commercial is very minor. The robberies, which were plaguing us for several years, especially during COVID and post-COVID, those are down this year by almost 10%. So, those are going well. And the area that we seem to struggle with, as we've talked a lot about this, is youth violence. You'll see the 67% increase in youth homicides, 55% in youth shootings. That's the biggest thing that is really, we've struggled with as a city, is a lot of young men and women are being shot in their streets, so. Move on to suspects, violent crimes, identified juvenile suspects. These are suspects aged 10 to 17. You'll see, 2023, we have 135 arrests. That's just year-to-date this year. The rest of those numbers are end-of-year numbers. And then the last few are juvenile arrests with adult charges. You'll see, we have one 14-year-old this year that was charged, 15-year-olds, 30, 16-year-olds, and 40, 17-year-olds, for a total. Actually, that total's off a little bit. Doesn't add up to 53. Adds up to 75 if you add them up. And those with the younger ones are usually for capital crimes, which will be a murder. And then we have our total juvenile contact. These are arrests through the Department of Juvenile Service, where this year, we have roughly 140 compared to end-of-year totals for all the rest of them. You'll see, 2019, a significant drop in the amount of young people that have been arrested, from 747 down to 140, because we do use other avenues of diversion and different things to try to avoid an arrest if we can with the young people. We don't want to criminalize them, but sometimes we still have to make the arrests. So, that will conclude the overview with the crime, unless you have questions.
Thank you. I have a ton of questions. And so, I'll open up the floor. I'll start with a couple myself. I would love to go back to the clearance rates, that's Slide 42. And I'm very concerned about where we are with our clearance rate. Typically, in the earlier parts of the year, we typically are doing better, just because the ratio is a little bit better. But given where we are, I'm very concerned, specifically about homicides and shootings. And I'm really curious about how we're thinking about clearance rates, what we can do to bring them up, and if you guys have thought about what that looks like in the budget, and what specific budget suggestions or changes we've made around the clearance rates.
Good. And I have my Colonel here. Well, actually, I should introduce my name. I have Colonel Jones, Chief of Patrol, Colonel Brown, Chief of Detectives, Shannon Conway, Department of Government Rental Services, and Aaron Murphy. I'm ready to call you. Aaron Conway. And I have my two Colonels, Lieutenant Colonels, Jack Herzog and Mark Howe, and Amanda Crackey from PIO. The homicide rate, I can tell you that 40 is even lower, because I have 10 folders on my desk right now to sign for exceptional clearances that I just haven't signed yet. And what'll happen is those will go through. Those are cases that we've already discussed on a call. We have a call every month where we talk about exceptional clearances, and we have to approve those as a team with our RMS representative, to make sure we have all the i's dotted and the t's crossed. So, that's going to go up slightly. We do have several cases that we are working on, so I think we're going to get up over 50%. I think we'll get up closer to the national average. We have some really good detectives working really hard, and you can see, we just closed the one with the T-Mobile. Was outstanding work. But we are concerned. We do have what we call Criminal Investigation Division stat, CID stat, where the Colonel speaks with homicide, and they go over cases and what... They have a checklist, so they have to have a certain amount of things done on the checklist by a certain time. And she goes over that with each one of... Each case, as they discuss them, as they come up for CID stats. So, that's something that we are concerned about. We wanted to get it high, but our men and women in homicide are probably the hardest working in the country, basically, for the amount of homicides that we get per detective. Plus, even if the average is about six a year for detectives, but that doesn't take into account all the other cases, that suspicious deaths, and the cases they were working the prior year. Plus, a good thing, but also a bad thing in homicide that we've had over the last year and a half to two years, we've probably lost 10 to 11 experienced homicide detectives to promotion. They've become sergeants, and they've moved out into patrol. And we've had to replace them, so some of our... We have some younger detectives. But it's a constant process. It's a good problem to have, because that means our men and women are promoting out of their positions. And then those would be the ones that would eventually, in a couple of years, would come back as the sergeants to lead. But it also gives them the ability to lead as a sergeant in a district, in a district detective unit, or a patrol unit, to help them with closing cases. And you can see that with our clearance rate, and our shootings is above where we were last year, and climbing. And what's part of that is, in the Chief Patrol's office, they implemented DDU stat, District Detective Unit stat, which is mirrored after the CID stat, where they go over the shootings the same way. So, those are all things that have led to... And I think we're getting there. It's just going to take a little bit of time, but I think we'll be up over 50% before the end of the year. No pressure to my homicide detectives.
I know. They're probably hearing you like...
I'm sure they're listening, because they're always listening to see what we say.
Look, I think this is an issue we've been dealing with for a few years now. And it's no shocker to me. I think these numbers are a little more alarming than the numbers that have frankly been alarming for a while now. I think we've talked about the caseload for our investigators, we've talked... For our detectives, we've talked about technology differences. We've talked about a couple of things. And I would love to have a comprehensive set of things that we're considering as a department, to make sure that we're holding people accountable. Because if we're catching, you know, just over 10% of people who kill people, and then who knows if those cases are strong enough. Once we are getting them to the State's Attorney's Office, that could be really problematic. And, I mean, it is problematic. So, it's really, really important that we find a way to fix this problem. I know other cities are dealing with it too, but I don't know if they're dealing with it quite at the same level we are, so.
And that's one thing we're working with. We've got a great relationship with the State's Attorney's Office. Our detectives, they've come and talked to our detectives. They've gone through some of the training with the NIBIN, to see exactly what some of the things are that we ask for. Our biggest problem is probably not getting some people to step forward and tell us who did it. Lots of cases, we have to rely on video and technology to give us the criminal that committed the crime. We just need more people to step up and tell us. I know it's tough to do that as a witness, but we can protect witnesses. We just need more people to step up and help our detectives.
Yeah. Colonel Brown, Chief of Detectives, what I was going to say is that we are working and partnering with the State's Attorney when it comes to, how do we strengthen cases and develop a system and training with our detectives, with Chief Donnelly here. He and I talk quite frequently, and that is one of the things that is on our radar. How do we bring back training to the detectives? Just because we do have some younger detectives, as the Deputy said, we've lost about 31 detectives and three sergeants, actually. So, that's a wealth of knowledge, experience, you know, expertise, training. But we're always operating at a net, not where we want to be, but we are seeing, of course, more advancement, you know, through the agency that can take some of that experience throughout the agency and still train our patrol officers already, you know, to get them into an investigative mindset. But one of the things that we're looking to do is figure out, how do we do some co-training together, where the State's Attorney is training up the detectives to say, hey, listen, these would be things that can strengthen your case almost immediately. And then also, for our detectives to have more understanding of what is expected for them when they are presenting their cases to them. So, in our CID stat, it is really for us to do almost an autopsy of the case, in a sense. Like, we're going through very... Some of the investigative steps that we feel like, hey, this probably can bring us more to a case closure. Have you considered to do this? And where we just roundtable and have that conversation, really with the supervisors and the detectives, just to say, hey, listen, if you do probably these couple of more things, we may be able to bring this case, that gives it stronger presentation when we are presenting to State's Attorney's Office for warrants.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I think to your point, sir, what we were looking at, you know, with the introduction of our DDU stat, there's a random sampling of every case, not just the cases that were within the last couple of weeks, but going back to older cases to see what work has been done with that, to give resolution and resolve to that family of those victims of those cases. What we're seeing is, I think the DC touched the surface on it, is a number of our cases are walk-in shootings, a number of our cases are the victim themselves. He mentioned witnesses not coming forward, the victims themselves being uncooperative. And then that's leading to detectives having to work with cameras and license plate readers to now two, three days of finding out information that could have been easily resolved with the cooperating victim or witness. So, those are the big things. I think even in spite of that, what we're doing is realizing that there is a specific number that we're looking at for caseloads for detectives, making sure that it's equal across the board, but also for those younger detectives that may not be handling shooting cases, that these burglary and aggravated assault detectives in the districts are working with the shooting detectives to learn the trade as they go. Because that's going to be the succession building going forward. And currently, as the DC alluded to, right now, our clearance rate is at 28%, which is at 2% above the national average. So, even we're doing more with less, and we're having some success in this early part of the year.
Yeah. I would be very, very interested to see if there was some sort of correlation between different crimes. You know, if robberies, for instance, are also committed by the same people who were doing the shootings and homicides. They may or may not be, who knows. But I would love if we had some way to figure that out. Maybe there isn't the data, maybe there is. But I, you know, I don't know. I'm not really satisfied by where we are, and I'm not really satisfied with what our options are at the table now. And, yeah, I would love if the next time we come back, we can have like a suite of things that we definitely want to tackle, that would help improve our clearance rates, a better understanding of why our clearance rates are so low, and if there are particular things that we can or should do to increase them. I think we have some of the, you know, insights to understand why we're having trouble closing some of these cases. Some of it is trust in our Police Department and our detectives. People don't want to talk to police. I can appreciate that. But I'm not sure that's always the case. Some of it is workload for our overworked, you know, detectives. Some of it is we have new people coming in, and they're still learning the craft. And I think to each of those problems, we certainly want to have as best as possible some approach to mitigate the concerns that come from it. So, if we could have that prepared for next time, I think that would be really, really helpful, because we come back, you know, every month or so, and it's not really moving the needle.
Yes, sir. And what... Well, the biggest hurdle for us is our staffing. We're five... Over 500 officers down. The department's got to authorize 2604, I believe it is. And I think the last report last week said we're 511 officers short of that. So, not only is the... Are the detectives working short, our patrol officers are out there working short as well. So, we're doing everything we can with recruitment, and trying some more things with retention to keep the people that we have and to hire new people. It's just going to... It's just going to take a while.
You know what? In my... In my own honest opinion, I feel like the less crimes we are able to clear or solve, the longer said criminal is going to do said activity, which makes more of a snowball effect on the problems that our detectives have to solve for. So, it's a self-fulfilling prophecy in a way. And I don't know if it takes a concerted effort for a short amount of time to get us up to speed, or if there's something else that we need to do. But I don't want to, you know, beat a dead horse here, but this is something that's been hanging out there for frankly years, and I know it's just been sliding. So, we can come back to that, and certainly for our next meeting, I would love to...
Yes, sir.
Have a sense for how we want to tackle it. And especially, I want you guys to think about this for the budget, how we are solving for some of these concerns and problems in the budget. You know, we get one crack at this a year, and if we think that money is a problem in any of those instances, we need to make that clear.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yes.
In addition to what we've heard from partners, there's a deep belief in Monsey that our law enforcement officers can't solve crime alone. And so, Monsey is, obviously, has a victim services team that works in partnership with the partners that are here today. And we are about to begin tracking data points associated with a victim's willingness to either disclose the offender to us and/or to BPD, so that we're figuring out how to serve as a bridge when we've got levels of concern around victimization or re-victimization. So, that I think would contribute to increasing our clearance rates, obviously, in addition to, you know, making sure that BPD has the homicide and non-fatal shooting staffing that they need.
I think that's great, and I think we should be thinking of more things like that. And interestingly, looking at some of the reasons why we are where we are, some of it may be overwhelmed, some of it may be people don't trust the Police Department, but some of it is that people don't feel safe. And whatever we can do to ameliorate those concerns, it may not mean necessarily hiring another police officer or another detective. And so, if we can figure out what exactly it is that's leading people not to step up, and try as best as possible to resolve that problem, of course, of well, well, of course, you know, still trying to hire police officers, because we know we need them. That's how I want us to think. We have to be problem solvers for the many problems that lead us wherever we go.
Plus, as we move with GVRS, you saw the huge success in the Western. There's a lot of different things with the partnership with Monsey, the State's Attorney's Office. And then we do the shooting reviews in the Western, and now we incorporate it to Southwest. So, as we move further along the city and the investigations continue, I think you'll start to see that. We had the huge decrease in the Western, and we still have decreases, again, this year on top of already really good numbers. It's going to be tough to keep those, because as we move towards the end of the year, they got really low. But Southwest is doing well, Western's doing well. And as we expand across the city, I think we'll incorporate a lot more of these practices into the other districts that aren't already doing them.
I want to jump to my second question. I know we went on that for a little bit. My next question was regarding gun arrests. So, on Slide 44, if you can go to that, I noticed, one, that the Eastern District is doing a phenomenal job on gun arrests. I'm curious what's going on there. Was there a concerted effort? Because I also noticed... I noticed, one, that the Eastern District is doing a phenomenal job on gun arrests. I'm curious what's going on there. Was there a concerted effort? Because I also noticed that in the Eastern District, when I was looking through the EXAM report that you guys send out,
Mm-hmm.
the Eastern District also saw a thirty-two percent reduction in homicides and non-fatal shootings. Maybe coincidence, maybe not, but certainly, we know that we have a gun problem across the city. If we're being better, if we're doing a better job at catching people who have illegal guns, that would naturally bring down our shooting and homicide rate.
The team in the Eastern is doing a phenomenal job. They did, now, they don't have GPRS yet, and I'll let Colonel Jones jump in as well, but they do the shooting reviews like we do in the Southwest and the Western. They already started them, so they'll be ready when we get there. But the team there, the command team and the men and women there, they use the BCI C probably as well as anybody with looking at things. Plus, they also had an investigation that took down a big indictment, that took several guns off the street. So those are some of the things that they're doing. But I think just pushing the men and women that go out there and do the job every day, and then reward them when they go out, tell them how well they're doing. And then I'll turn it over to Colonel Jones.
No, the DC spotted one. I think in the Eastern District, you do have a winning team from the captain on down, and then the utilization, optimization of their BIC, as well as their intel officer and their DDU lieutenant and sergeant. I think they're hyper-focused in those areas where they need to be, along the Miami Street corridor. They're focused on that up-the-hill and down-the-hill issues that we've had, not only in the Eastern District that, but has unfortunately resurfaced in other districts of the city. So collaborating with those other districts, and then their proper use of outside resources. So when available, we're giving them the Eastside Initiative, we're giving them the Mobile Metro Team, as well as our Special Weapons and Tactics guys are being deployed along that Eastern District border, West, Southeastern District, Southeast border. And I think they're hyper-focused in going after the right individuals, extracting those individuals, and it's paying dividends for them.
Can I just add to that, since I have a little bit of Eastern, that they have been doing a lot recently on building trust in the community as well. The major and I have had a lot of conversations and have been in the community together to, and that does make a big difference, as you had mentioned earlier.
That community trust is real big. Major Thacker is one of our premier majors when it comes to not only being tactically sound, but understanding the collaboration that we have to have with the community. He goes above and beyond in reference to his outreach, not only through his NCOs, but himself making himself available. We just had an NCO refresher today. He gets it that it's bigger than him, it's reaching down to those grassroots organizations and those people that matter, giving them the voice. Because when a community says we have an issue, past history has always meant cops on the dots for us. It's more than cops on the dots. It's talking to the community to see exactly what they mean and exactly what they need to fix whatever the underlying issues are.
Yeah, no, that's great. I think we just, when we look at the Eastern District, if they're getting some things right, we certainly should find ways to emulate if we think it will make the difference, some of those processes and, you know, traits in the other districts. I also noticed amongst gun-related arrests, in the Southeast, we see a reduction in gun-related arrests. It's like a thirty-something percent reduction or decrease in gun-related arrests. And when I also go back to the EXAM report, we noticed a very steep increase, a one-hundred-and-five percent increase in homicides and shootings in the Southeast. So I'm curious what's going on there, if we have a sense for why we're seeing that spike this year. And I look back at last year's numbers as well. Last year, they were doing better than the year before, but this year, we seem to be having some issues. I just want to...
One of the things in the Southeast is a little different. Unfortunately, I think the Southeast may be the victim of the Eastern's success a little bit. I think the Eastern has pushed some of their, because it's all around that border. The Eastern has two district action teams, the Southeast has one, plus the Southeast has Fellows Point and all those other areas. So they're moving their dat team up to that border. But I think some of those issues are, would have plagued them. Plus, they had some turnover in their district action team with some movement in and out of the unit that caused some of the decreases. But I think they've made the adjustments now. They put together a really good robbery plan, and it's going really well. So I think you'll start to see the Southeast start to come down in the near future. She, the major, the two majors are working together with a joint initiative along that border. So they're really, we don't want them to have a border. We don't want that street to say, okay, I can't go above. We don't want that. Plus, we had to give them some extra resources. They're one of the units, one of the districts that we did have our mobile field force there, and she has help from the sheriffs on the weekends and some other units that we shared, send there to give her some help.
Yeah, yeah. And I know the major there very well. She, you guys stole her from the northern.
Yeah, you stole her from the northern.
We allocated.
I know she's phenomenal. I just, you know, in understanding where we're seeing that decline in gun arrests, and then also the subsequent increase in homicides and non-fatal shootings, I want to understand what's going on there as best as possible so that we can nip it in the bud, so that, you know, toward the end of this year, we're not seeing an overall increase in the Southeastern District.
Understood. We look at it every, we look at it every, we make adjustments every single day with the staffing as to who we need to send where, because we have a limited amount of them to send. So we got to look, see where we send them. But she's definitely getting some extra resources to combat some of the spikes that she's had.
Yeah. All right, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues. I'm going to start, start with Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also, looking at the non-fatal shootings, Northeast is really having a rough time. And, you know, we have a, I think, a great team there. I think that there's just been, I'm trying to understand what's happening there. Again, we have a good relationship with the command staff and, but it seems like, and one thing that I know we talked about before was, one of the worries that I had had at one point in time that I've expressed in these hearings is that some of the work that's being done in Western District, if it's moving up to Northeast, and that has been told to me several times by command staff, that that is not the case. So something else is happening here, and I'm just curious what that is.
I can give you some, the Northeast, probably, I'm a little biased because I was a major there for three and a half years.
Yes.
That is probably the toughest district to work because there's so many, there's so many different pockets. And what's happening with the Northeast this year, they've taken some volats in the Chum, which has been very quiet for a really long time. So what happened is they have one district action team. They mainly stay over around the Bel Air Edison to try to crush those issues. So the Chum, which had gone basically almost nonexistent with violence, has increased. And we looked at every, that started actually under the previous command a little bit, and we looked at every possible option as to why is that? Are people getting out there in jail? Are there other drug crews coming in there? We've looked at everything, but if you look at a lot of the stuff they've had recently in these outlying areas, they had the triple homicide, and nothing we can do about that up on that street. And they have, unfortunately, what happens, and I dealt with this in the Northeast, is they have a lot of meetup drug buys. And what that means is they'll find a secluded street, they'll meet up to purchase drugs, and then somebody decides they either want to rob the drug dealer, or it doesn't go right, and they shoot them. And we end up, we wouldn't have had deployment there. Now, Bowley's, we did have some issues earlier in the year. They've deployed to that. They just got another handgun the other day there where two of our detectives walked in foot. They see the individual with characteristics, an armed person, get him with a handgun. So when we, when we do deploy to those areas that become overly problematic, they do a good job. Unfortunately, they've been hit in areas where we don't have deployment, or we wouldn't really have.
Well, yeah. I mean, that's the thing, is that, like Frankford, you didn't ever see anything happening up there. But my understanding is that we still are dealing with this interpersonal conflict as well.
Yes.
Which is, you know, was a subject of another hearing, so we don't need to go over that. But, you know, we do need to continue to concentrate on that effort.
That and the fact that all the gun, everyone's, they carry a gun.
Everybody's got a gun.
They don't fight with hands anymore. Unfortunately, there's a gun involved. And if somebody has a gun, they're probably going to use it if they get into a brawl or fighting. They come out on the short end.
Yeah. I know the team is doing what they can, so, but it's just unfortunate to see such a big spike, and, you know, since the trends have been a little bit better for that district.
And in one year, the one year, two years ago, was kind of an anomaly. The numbers were down so low. If you look at all the years before and all the years past, this year's up a little bit more. But if you take that one-year anomaly out, everything was about the same. Because I look at it, of course, I was there, so it's got a special place that I look. Unfortunately, for the commanders, I know the district too pretty well, too.
So you know what questions to ask. Right, exactly. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, deputy and the team. You know, I do want to first acknowledge the reductions in homicides and shootings, and that is a positive trend. At the same time, deeply concerned about the rise in juvenile violence. Far too many children in our city are getting hurt and are hurting others. And to me, as a parent, to me as a former teacher, it is just deeply alarming to see that trend, especially heading into summer, which we know historically has been some of the most challenging time for our city. And so knowing that we need an all-in approach right now with increased summer programming and youth works and school and everything else, I am curious how the department is responding, particularly as we see some gaps around DJS and having young people that are re-offending, that are perpetually caught in the wheels of the criminal justice system. And it does not seem like rehabilitation is happening. And, you know, I know this preceded this administration in Annapolis, but, and I know that they're doing a review, but it does seem like we have struggled between DJS and our local agencies just to have a sense of where our kids are and to make sure that they are staying out of harm's way. So I'm curious, from BPD's perspective, as we head into the summer, how are we addressing that piece? How are we working with our partners in state agencies to make sure we have a clear focus and that whether it's ROKA or any of the other intensive programs that MONC and others have been coordinating, that our young people have the level of support and accountability that they need to stay out of harm's way?
I don't, I don't think you're going to find anybody that's more concerned other than the police department, all city officials, especially the mayor. The mayor has put everybody together, chief administrative officer. They're working on ways to bring the young people together at all these different events throughout the year, throughout the city, to take away, not to take away their free time, but to occupy some of their free time. Put them in any kind of events. They're trying to put it out. We've got, we started with, we're going to have the youth football, we're going to have the basketball. Those are things that we can do. But the city has so many other things that Parks and Recs is working on, MONC's working on, the CAO is working on, to keep the young people occupied, to give them something to do. And then also, we know they're going to come down to Harbor. We know that. We know it's going to happen again during this summer. And we have deployments there. And our deployment is to just move them along. If they're, if they're being disruptive, or they're breaking the law, we move them along, or we make an arrest. But we don't want to make an arrest. We just want to move them along. We want everybody to come and have a good time. That's why you see the way the, we have the different deployments set down the harbor. We have officers around there. We have officers around the CFG arena. And we work with Department of Juvenile Services with the monitors and with the, to try to find out these young people who are going to be a problem. Unfortunately, some of them just need to be part of the system in order to learn a lesson. We can't save everyone, but we're doing everything we can to keep that, keep them occupied so that they're not creating havoc where, if they do go down the harbor or anywhere else in the city. And I know the city, the mayor is working diligently to get all these different things set up. And we're working with schools. We have a really good relationship. One of the things that school, to school, I almost forgot this, but one of the huge impacts that schools helped us with was, I know you all saw the flyer about the thing at Mondamin Mall. So it was create havoc at Mondamin Mall. We had a huge plan put together. Soulscis System helped us out a great deal. They did a call to the parents, said, hey, this is what's being planned. Make sure your children don't go there because it could, it could be dangerous. And it ended up being a huge bust. We had a lot of cops there waiting if anything happened, which was a good thing because nothing happened. So some officers made some overtime and was able to go home without any issues.
Yeah, I want to thank you guys because when someone passed that along to me, it was the first thing I did, is I passed it to your team, and
Yes, sir.
you guys jumped on it. I'm glad we were able to get it.
Yeah, the major, Major Correll put together a fabulous plan, and all we did was gave him some resources. But the school system and all of the rest of the city services helped us out. MTA police were there, school police were there. It was a collaborative effort.
So it comes down to, as the DC alluded to, to co-production. You mentioned ROKA. We're working with Yap, we're working with Baltimore Promise. I know every, bi-weekly, we're having a summer coordination, coordination meeting with Baltimore Promise in reference to events that are coming up this summer, in reference to the night basketball at the Dome, in reference to night swimming. So things to get the officers and the community and the youth engaged. At the rec centers, there have been identified some problematic rec centers. So what we did is, we've installed sign-in books in each of the rec centers. So members from the team, be they NCO officers or patrol officers, are going in there, signing the books, engaging with the community. As I mentioned earlier, we had an NCO refresher, our neighborhood coordinating officers, there was a refresher today in reference to problem-solving and trying to reach those youth who seem to be resource-resistant. So we're trying to catch them on the front end and divert them through projects like sidestepping others. But unfortunately, there are some times when individuals who are breaking the law, you know, have to be arrested. And as of today, we've arrested seventeen juveniles with polymer eighties, which is an alarming rate. But we're trying to get it on both ends of both enforcement, but also resources and on the front end of outreach.
Absolutely. And I think the resource piece is key. You know, as, like I said, a former teacher, knowing that for many of our young peoples, they just, they want something to do, and they want something that's fun and engaging and entertaining. And, you know, I am proud of Baltimore for our youth works program in particular, where we put seven thousand kids to work each summer. That is best in class, if you look at similar cities. Just follow up, though, specifically on the DJS piece, knowing that, to your point, it's a relatively small amount of young people that are persistently in trouble. And we know the early indicators, we know the aces, the adverse childhood experiences that start a young person down the road of entering into the justice system. And so I am curious just about that sort of gap, because it does feel like if we know the, we have a decent sense of who the young people are that are most vulnerable to either commit acts of violence or be victims of violence, what are we doing to ensure the village is truly surrounding them from a BPD perspective? And I understand there is a lot of coordination and appreciate all the partners you mentioned. I'm going to the meeting for Baltimore's Promise that they've been holding tomorrow. I think they're doing an outstanding job. But just from BPD's perspective, from a sort of tight lens of the young people that are in the DJS system, what are we doing to make sure they have what they need?
Yep. I think what we've done is, we're, as I said before, we do a good job of pulling these youth out of the water, but we need to find out where they're falling in. And that's the biggest issue. So working with our school systems and parental involvement, we had, I think, two, three weeks ago, we had a lunch and learn with DJS in reference to those gaps you were talking about of how to better optimize our partnership. So identifying those small numbers of percentages of repeat offenders. So are they on active monitoring? Are they on passive monitoring? Is it something that we can do once we get an individual who, for whatever reason, continues to steal cars or be in carjacking or whatever it is, having a quick response between our detectives as well as DJS representatives to flag these individuals so they're known to us. So we're trying to figure out what resources they may need, either on the front end with the parent, or on the back end with services in reference to mental health and substance abuse. So we have, we've identified that. Like I said, we've had that lunch and learn, and we're working collaboratively with DJS to fill those gaps of identifying those problematic individuals of saying, hey, this person may not be on your radar yet, but he's on ours. What can we do in reference to, is this person a sinner? Is a child in need of assistance? Or is he a sinn, a child in need of supervision? So we're trying to work it from all levels as possible.
I appreciate that. My second question, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just also going to mention, sir, that BPD participates in a meeting that's convened by the mayor's office of Children and Family Success. That is a cross-agency meeting that involves DSS and DJS, in which we have started conversations about the development of an inter-agency MOU around data sharing. We've been very specific with each agency about the data that needs We've been very specific with each agency about the data that needs to be shared, and we have identified criteria associated with what a high-risk youth looks like compared to an at-risk youth. I think that speaks to the question that you're asking directly around reducing the likelihood of introduction to the criminal justice system where we can, and also accounting for the reduction of repeated criminal acts.
This isn't, I mean, I know we talk about the police and Monty and DJS, but this is a parental issue as well. I mean, we, we had a 15-year-old who was a victim of a crime at 3:00 in the morning yesterday, or this morning. I mean, what's a 15-year-old doing out in, in West Baltimore at 3:00 AM without any parental supervision? I mean, you've just got to know where your kids are, and we can't, as much as we, we can do, it, it all falls back and starts with the parents. So, we've got to start holding parents accountable too.
Director Jackson, I want to thank you for bringing that point up because it's something we, we've been discussing here a lot, and I'm glad to hear that you guys are thinking of ways to leverage data at different points to figure out how we can intervene and where it's most appropriate. I, I appreciate there are things that, you know, parents need to do. I, I think that is true. I also do appreciate that we, as city officials, need to do everything we can to help those parents. And so, I, you know, really curious what comes out of the data collaborative and the MOU and what next steps are, and maybe that's something we can follow up with, given your question here in this committee.
And I'm sure you've already had this conversation as well, but our mutual friend at Baltimore's Promise, I know, has done a lot of work and thinking around data share, specifically around this question. So, you know, I think leveraging that would be great.
And we are absolutely working with Baltimore's Promise, given the legislation that was passed last year in Annapolis around data sharing, but want to advise both the council and the public that the data sharing agreement is associated with aggregate information. And in order to truly address what you just asked us to address and what our communities asked us to address, we've got to get disaggregated information. We've got to get specific information to our children in order to do the work that communities do together, because they aren't other people's children, they're all our children.
Yeah. Thank you for that. My second question, the, the number one concern I hear about BPD when I walk around the city is police officers in cars. I've said this at previous hearings. I understand there are times when officers need to go back and log something into the system and record data, fully get it, but it remains a deep concern. I see it with my own eyes in my communities, when I'm downtown, when I'm in other neighborhoods. And it is frustrating to hear repeatedly about officer shortages, which we understand, and that is a national issue. Every city in America, I think, is having this same conversation about police shortages. I was in Philadelphia last week, and it is literally the same conversation that everyone is having. And so, I think to, I think it was the chair's point or just generally, I think at some point, we have to acknowledge that the reality is that people are not joining police forces in the numbers that we want them to, and we need to really be creative and start like our colleague from the 8th district was trying to do, recruiting from within, strengthening our apprenticeship programs, bringing in, trying to make the profession more appealing for local residents and for children coming through Baltimore City Public Schools, and just acknowledge that unless we import a whole bunch of cops from, I know we did in Puerto Rico a couple of years ago, unless we do something big like that, we can talk about 500, 400, 300 short until we turn blue in the face, but it's not moving the needle. I've sat here for six years and seen commissioner after commissioner say, we are working on the recruitment issue, we're working on it, but I haven't seen any measurable progress. And so, unless there is a new plan, I'm really hoping that we, as a department, can just own that and adjust for it and acknowledge it and work. I know that the mayor has done a lot of civilianization. I know that he has worked incredibly hard to, whether it's around mental health or whether it's around car crashes, like to take police out of non-police issues and to sort of stop the mission creep that I think we've seen again across the country where we expect police officers to do everything for everybody. But I'm just really hoping that we're moving to a place where we acknowledge these shortages and stop saying it over and over and over again as if it's going to get solved, because I don't think that it is unless there is something that I'm missing here. And then to really, really, really push on our police to be the force multipliers that we know they can be, to be out of the cars, to be engaged in community, to be doing the business checks. It just goes a really long way to see them on the street versus seeing them sitting in a squad car.
Yeah, but sometimes, like you, you'd already brought it up, we, we do need to do a little better job of getting the men and women out of the cars, but a lot of the stuff that Colonel Jones and Colonel Brown and I used to have to go back to the station to do, the officer can sit there and do right on his laptop. Plus, there's also times where a lot of these officers, every, every day as our patrol officers go out on the street, about 25% of them are on overtime. So, they've probably already worked at eight and a half hour shifts. So, some of those men and women you see probably are on their 10th, 12th, or 14th hour of working that may just need a breather to sit down and, and take a break. So, all the different things go into it, and we, we have to acknowledge a shortage every single day because we have to deploy with what we have. Even if we hired 500 cops tomorrow, they're not coming for 18 months.
Right.
Because they got to go through the academy, go through field training. So, we've got to work with what we have, and we'll continue to do that, but we do need other, we are coming up with other ways to recruit more and retain the officers that we have as well.
And if I could, council member, just a reminder to you and to the general public that Mayor Scott did have conversations with Dr. Santeliesis in the school system with regard to the introduction of public safety as a CTE track in our schools, so that we do have a pipeline of Baltimoreans coming to do the service work for Baltimore. In addition to that, the DC and I just had a meeting with the deputy mayor for public safety and other members of the executive committee on Monday, and one of the topics of conversation was what our new recruitment strategy for BPD is going to be. And so, there is absolutely a plan developing, and we'll keep you all up to date.
No, and I do appreciate that, and I, you know, again, want to acknowledge Councilmember Net's bill that he passed around increasing apprenticeships and, you know, both for police and fire. I think it's important work. I just, you know, when I hear the number 500 police short thrown around, I think it sets an expectation for the public that at some point, we're going to go back up there. And if we were, then great, but as we head into budget season and knowing the amount of the city's budget that gets absorbed by the police department, I just want to have a really honest conversation with the public about where we are and where we are likely to be for the foreseeable and that we need to adjust based on that. I'll also say to the madam director's point, I mean, having the sheriff's department has been extremely helpful. They've been, I would say, very engaged, from what I can see, in not just the warrants and guarding the court, but actually the crime fight. And so, that's been great, and having, you know, our state's attorney, who I think has been just on the street, engaged, working with folks, I think has really given a new sense of confidence in some of our officers, from what I've seen as well, and that's extremely helpful. I just, you know, again, will say until my face turns blue, that it is a ongoing frustration. I understand needing to take a break. I fully respect the mental health and wellness of police officers and what a stressful, draining job it is, and I think we still see too many officers in cars for too long.
Yes, sir. And one thing, as we just started, we're getting ready to graduate a class. I think it's, we just started a class, we're getting ready to graduate one, I believe, on June 2nd, and then at the same time, we have a class that's getting ready to come out of field training. So, we're starting classes every six to eight weeks. We want to have 50 in the class, but we're not quite getting any high, but we're starting the class anyway so that we still get that influx. About every two months, we're getting new officers on, and if we can work to keep the ones that we have and cut down on the retirements, I think that's where we can, we can make some progress.
Yeah, I just know that the attrition remains a deep concern, and again, I do, you know, this has always been a top issue for our mayor, the civilianization and, you know, making sure that folks who are in uniform aren't doing non-police functions, which I think is a great shift for us to have made as a city, or at least we're trying to make it. So, you know, again, appreciate, appreciate all of that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I have just two more quick questions. One is actually a little longer than the other, and I want to circle back to a question my colleague brought up around youth violence. And, you know, we, we had a slide up here, slide 48, that showed homicides and shootings. We've been talking about this a little bit, we're seeing the spike in youth violence across the city. I'm really curious, from the violence that we're seeing, how much of it involves guns and what we know about the access to guns for young people in the city and, and how we're thinking about sort of cracking that nut.
Yeah, every, every one, well, not every one of the homicides, because there were a couple baby deaths in there, unfortunately. I believe eight of the 10 homicides involve gun violence. And everyone, obviously, everyone in the shootings involved gun violence. But what we're seeing, what we're seeing with that, it's mainly, what was your question? I'm sorry, I forgot it that quick.
What, what we're seeing so far is access to guns, so that means that, you know, 40, 40 young people had guns in their hands and were able to use it.
I know Colonel Jones had, had brought this up, but what we're seeing, the biggest problem that we're seeing, and I know the mayor's already got a lawsuit, these ghost guns, these young people, not just young people, anybody can order a gun.
How many of the guns were ghost guns? Do we know that?
What was that, sir?
How many of these guns were ghost guns?
That were used here? I'm not sure. I can get that for you, but I know Colonel Jones said how many, we, we just, I think, what was the number you said we arrested this year?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, and those, those are just ordered a gun online, find a couple tools and put the gun together, you got to fully operational. Not only that, the, the young people are getting access to the guns because older people are ordering their parts and then they're selling them on the streets. So, they're not, they're not vetting who they sell it to, they just sell it to whoever, whoever you can. And we're, unfortunately, a lot of young people are ending up with guns in the hand, their hands, and they don't know how to resolve their, their issues, and they, they pull the gun and go to gun violence.
And for some of those numbers in reference to ghost guns for ages, we've had about 11 arrests so far this year for 15-year-olds, and between 16 and 17, also 11. So, we've seen, we've had three arrests with youth as young as 13 with ghost guns.
Wow. And do we, do we have any additional information on tracing of those guns, where they're coming from? So, for instance, we know that some adult purchased gun parts online and then sold to a young people. Are we, in instances where we know who the young person is, like what are our clearance rates on these, these cases involving young people? And then for that, are we able to do any more analysis on where the guns are coming from and if we can interrupt?
So, that's the anomaly with them, because there is no tracing, because you can order them right online, and I, I won't, I'm not comfortable to say that it's only the adults. Young folks have access to cash or some type of mechanism that gives them money, and they can go right online and order these parts separately, just like an adult, and have it delivered without an adult even knowing the day of being delivered. And I think that is one of the gaps that we're, we're working with, you know, our federal partners and figuring out, how do we close that gap in the, in that investigative process to trace it all the way back from, from that purchase? And of course, unless we have receipts and, and things like that, that makes it a little difficult. So, but the investigation process is happening, they're not traceable just for the simple fact that they, they're not serialized.
Got it. And as far as the.
We actually got 101 ghost guns so far this year, but the mayor, we, we work with the mayor through data-driven. He, he does, we do give him a list of where the ones that do come into the city, how we can track, and most of them come from our outlying counties. But there are some specific gun shops in other states where we know we're getting guns coming into the city that the mayor's talking about what the next steps are with those gun stores.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I, I think I just, as much as possible, want to understand, you know, how young people are getting these guns in their hands and if there are methods, mechanisms, or otherwise, for us to intervene before that happens. Now, certainly, I know we have that lawsuit that we're pushing forward, and it sounds like that would capture exactly this kind of problem, where they're indiscriminately selling guns that then end up in the hands of children, and people die as a result, children die as a result. But anything else we can do in that, to that order, I think is helpful.
So, some of the, of the challenges, I think, is when we do make arrests or unfortunately, even when we have our young victims who, youth who may be victims of crime, we have some parameters, right, and restrictions of when we are able to talk to them. So, that has been kind of a barrier. Even if they are a victim, they can decline automatically. If parent is not around, if they don't have legal representation, that kind of hinders some of the investigative process, where just those same questions that, that you want to know, we want to know. But if, you know, pretty much the parent says, absolutely not, you're not talking to my child, you know, then we have to figure out other investigative measures that can help us answers tho, answers those questions to. One, why were they victimized? And then two, like you're asking, how do they get access to this weapon? So, that, that has been a challenge that necessarily hasn't, that we haven't figured out how to overcome, except for, you know, through victim services, maybe using some of their connection or connectivity to the parent to say, hey, why this is a good thing for us to have these conversations, and even with detectives being persistent, to see if the parent would still be willing to allow us to have those conversations, you know, with the youth, but we're not always successful. You know, rightfully so with, with some of the things, as you, you mentioned earlier. Public trust is a huge thing of, around us, you know, in law enforcement. It may not have always been the greatest in relationship, but I think the way that we continue to do that is still showing that the goal is ultimately to make sure that we're safeguarding our youth, one, and then two, of course, the community.
Do we do any undercover or sort of sting operations, particularly targeting people who sell guns to young people? Or maybe that's too specific of a question?
So, I won't say maybe sting, but normally, if we get any intelligence or maybe some type of tip or some information that comes in that says, hey, we have this individual, I think, wanted to mention last year, as the commissioner maybe talked about in one of our other hearings, is having that individual who pretty much had gun parts as ornaments on a Christmas tree. Now, we can use the federal partners, you know, to go in and do those other investigative processes that take it back, where you're looking for the tracing, where you're looking for the charging. That is where we, we, you know, leverage them for those. So, when we get tips about that, that is who we use. So, that unit is, is also under my command, and normally, whenever those tips come in, almost automatically, they are addressed and sent to them because they have more of the investigative measure time to really look and do a deeper dive than we do, you know, from what we're using most of our resources for.
And I'll tell you why I ask that question. It's, in thinking about how we deal with sales of alcohol to young people, if we get a tip, we do a sting typically. And so, and just a thought there, I don't know if that was something that we've maybe considered. Nonetheless, I have no further questions for the department. I do have a lot more questions, but I want to move along the, the hearing. Any other questions from my colleagues before we move forward? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to turn it over to the mayor's office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement. Director Jackson, for yours. Oh, and for the presentation, is it all right if we start at slide 11 or, or move very quickly through the slides up to that point? Because I think that's where the meat of the, of it all is.
We are happy to start where you'd like to start, Mr. Chair. Thank you for having us, and members of the committee, thank you for having us. As I mentioned earlier, Monty is joined by partners, the Baltimore Police Department and the State's Attorney's Office. With me here today is Terrence Nash, the, the deputy for the Group Violence Reduction Strategy, and Jeremy Biddle, who serves as the Baltimore-based member of our technical assistance team. For members of the public, given that we won't be able to get through slides one through 10, you can expect the mayor's office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement to post the entirety of this slide deck on its website. So, starting on slide number 12, really, in the, in the Western District, nearly all of those who got referred for services since January 2022 have accepted, as you can see here. The first four months from the Southwestern District indicate a higher rate of refusal, possibly because the, the Southwestern referrals tend to be younger individuals who are less open to breaking away from their current path. I will say that we have had some internal conversations with regard to the engagement of Community Moral Voice members who are closer in age to that population. Want to make a note here that refusal means that. Want to make a note here that refusal means that an individual explicitly and repeatedly rejected an offer of support. Moving ahead to slide thirteen. So our Southwestern problem analysis was completed. This body may remember that we completed a problem analysis for the Western District. We have completed one also for the Southwestern. And we'll be presenting problem analyses as we move from district to district, so that the, both the public and the council have a, a true understanding of the dynamics of groups at a district level as we seek to engage. In conducting the Southwestern District Problem Analysis, we found that well over half, about fifty-nine percent of the victims and the suspects in twenty-twenty-two were between the ages of sixteen and thirty-four years old. By contrast, though, our Western District Problem Analysis found that older men, in addition to youth, were at the, the center of gun violence. Going to move on to slide fourteen. We also learned from the Southwestern District Problem Analysis that serious gun violence is generated by disputes involving members of criminally active groups. That the most common motives are personal disputes, group disputes, and drug-related disputes. These motives account for thirty-one out of forty-four group member-involved cases. So that's about seventy percent of our cases. And these groups are relatively small, but they generate a bulk of the serious violence that this district has faced. And also generate a high victimization rate and risk to those folks who are involved. Next slide, please. So here, we're looking at the Western District. And of all of those who accepted the offer of services in the Western District, you can see that we're talking about seventy-two individuals accepted life coaching, fifty-eight individuals accepted cognitive behavioral therapy. I would say that we're offering life coaching to everyone. That is the actual touch as frequently as you need it with someone in as close to real time as possible, whether it's a phone call or a visit. In the Western District, the most common, or the next most common service is CBT. That's about seventy-eight percent of all participants, followed by education. Thirty percent of our participants are looking for some sort of educational service provision. When we think about total participants, you'll notice the reference note here. A small number of folks may not yet be getting a particular service due to the lag between accepting a service and then enrolling in the service. And then, next slide, and then I'll turn it over to partners. On slide sixteen, the Southwestern District is following a roughly similar pattern to the Western with regard to the breakdown of services that we're providing, with about seventy-five percent of all participants getting cognitive behavioral therapy. The same note on total participants as the previous slide. So we've got a small number of people who might not yet be getting a particular service, because while they've accepted the service, they haven't necessarily been enrolled in the service just yet. With regard to focused enforcement, I'll turn the next few slides over to my partners at BPD.
Yep. Good afternoon again. If you go into slide eighteen, you'll see the active investigations by month since the beginning of the year. We usually want, we want to try to keep two in each district, as you saw the expansion. We had four at one point, but all four of those in February and March were in the Western District. One that lasted quite a long time, that we ended up getting thirty-three indictments out of, which helped us a lot. We are a little, we have two right now going on in the Western. We got one that's probably going to come down soon, and another one or two that's probably going to open. And we're not, we're not very far from opening one in the Southwest as well. Then you move on to the closed investigations. You'll see the first one, as you see Poe Holmes. It took us, we were on that one, that was basically the first one. Took us about eight months. And then the, the second, the WIC squad, is seven months. And then you see we get down towards where we want to be, to the thirty to sixty-day investigation, which was the Princess Plaza. The one that they just finished was originally supposed to be thirty to sixty days. But unfortunately, this is the, the B and B would happen with that one. It just kept snowballing to something bigger and bigger and bigger. And they stayed on it for a little over a year. But it ended up with touching a lot of individuals, thirty-three indictments, that it's going to have a huge impact in both the Western, Southwest, and throughout the city. And then we just had a really, a, a quick one that went three months. That was six indictments, two violence drivers at Franklin and McHenry. And then you move on to the arrests by month. You'll see in those months, in September, October, November, December, were, were low because we were fully into that investigation. And then what we, you see it increased a little bit with the indictments. And all this, we still had, during this time period, we had a switch in the command in the GVRS. We had a, a major and captain both abruptly retired at the same time. So we had to replace the captain and replace, replace the major. Major Velt, he just got there about a month ago. He came out of retirement, he missed it so much, he decided to come back. Literally, that's what, what happened. He came back and he's, he's now the major at GVRS. He's doing a phenomenal job. And Captain, Captain White is his executive officer. Those two are working together. And they've already made huge strides in getting it, getting the unit back on, back on track. They did lose some members to promotion as well as transfers. So we got to build them up a little bit. And then we just recently replaced two of the sergeants who had moved on to other things. So quite a, quite a good accomplishment considering the turnover. And I think the unit is, is set. We're getting ready to give them some detectives. And then we'll be moving on with, I think you'll see it start to, to move on then into the Southwest. And then when we ready to do the expansion into the Central. Then you move on to prosecution of the violent group members, the circuit court cases.
Yep, this is for the SAO, sir.
Yep. Glad to turn it over to them.
Thank you. I'm Tom Donnelly. I'm the Deputy State's Attorney in Major Crimes. And with me today is Angela Galliano, who's Chief of Staff, as well as Hassan Giordano behind me. As far as the total cases, it's been a hundred and thirteen in the circuit court. We still have thirty-five of those cases active as of May third. You'll see that the guilty findings came down to sixty-three, not guilty, it's cut off there, it looks, it's three. And then Stetson Noel process make up twelve total out of the hundred and thirteen cases. And on the next slide, number twenty-three, it lists the reasons for Stetson Noel process, including one pursuant to plea negotiations in another case, one for federal adoption, a total of five that have witnesses, or three for officers not available, two for lab issues, and two just for insufficient evidence.
Thank you. Moving on to slide number twenty-five. So comparing the homicide shooting and non-fatal shooting, victim numbers across all of our districts, the Western saw the largest decline in homicides and shootings in twenty-twenty-two, with fifty lives year over year, to the tune of thirty-two percent. Moving on to slide number twenty-six, there have been fourteen fewer victims in the Southwestern District year-to-date versus twenty-twenty-two. And in the Western District, with the expansion, we anticipated challenges because of the need to completely reshape the functionality of city services, what support would look like, and law enforcement efforts. This is why we have been really intentional and careful along not to overstretch capacity. In pace of our expansion, we are now very successfully integrating all of BPD's district resources, both in the Western District and the Southwestern District, which provides mapping for what the expansion's going to look like in next districts. Next slide. So as a reminder to folks, expansion districts have to meet group violence criteria before we get there. Scale-up cannot outstrip capacity. We've got to ensure that we are using data to drive our plan. And quite frankly, we want to make sure that we continue to align all of our management processes with the actual deployment strategies and, and the team engagement here. And then on the final two slides, and we're happy to answer your questions. On slide number twenty-nine, just a reminder of the guiding principles around scaling. Got to have a group violence challenge. It's got to be interconnected with the districts that we're in. We can't outstrip the projected capacities, and that the expansion has to benefit the entirety of the plan and not just a piece of the plan. The last piece that I'll add here around key criteria is that we've got to maintain our KPIs. We, we, we will not just move forward into a district because it's on the schedule. We've got to make sure that we are delivering to the commitment that we've made to the City of Baltimore. The last slide here just reminds folks of the commitment made with regard to the pace around the expansion across the entirety of the city. The pace and the decisions that we'll make around that are always going to be dictated by capacity, as well as the data that we've got. So I will stop here, sir, and members of the committee, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Director. Appreciate you walking through it.
I tried to do a face.
What was that?
I tried to do a face.
Yeah, no, it was, it was great. It's perfect. And, and I think you hit exactly the highlights that I, I wanted to dig into. So a couple of questions. I was sort of curious about, first, regarding police resources. And this is something that I'd asked about before, and I'm really curious how we're thinking about this as we expand. I think I had a chance to talk to your team about this in advance. So when we initially rolled out the program, it was forty, forty officers in the Western District. Of course, expanding, the question has always been, do we need additional officers? Where do we get them from? So I'm, I'm curious how that expansion has played out, how we've tackled it, knowing we have shortages. Are we pulling from other places? If, if not, are we integrating it into regular police responsibility? I have so many questions here. So just answer, you, you get what I'm asking?
I do. And I'll let my partners at the Police Department lead, and happy to fill in any gaps where you all think I would be helpful.
No, we, we have not pulled additional officers. And we won't pull any additional officers for the, anytime soon. We do have to get them back up to, staffed up to where they were when we started, because like I mentioned earlier, we've lost some people to, to transfers, retirement, several things. So we're going to get them back up to where they are. But the way we do this is like what we've done with almost everything we have to do, is we have to do more with less. So what we have is we have, as the GVRS model moves across, across the city, we have to rely on the district, district action teams to assist with the investigations. We want them to start doing some of the investigations. That, that does not mean they're going to be absorbed in the GVRS, because that's not the model. But we do want them, because it is a, a people-based philosophy, strategy. So we want them to start going after the same groups, same types of groups that GVRS is. And as we move across, as we move out of, not completely out of the Western, is moving to the Southwest, the Western District, that team is starting to do a little bit more of that. And we do that at every one of our violence reviews on Tuesdays. We talk about the cases, who's going to go after this, who's going to follow up on this? And we have the districts involved in that more where it used to be just GVRS. So we've got to incorporate the districts as we move across, because we simply don't have the people to, to continue to build.
Yeah, that, that's helpful. Every district has a DAT team?
Yes, sir. Some have two, the Southwest, Western, who else? Eastern. Eastern and Central have two. Everybody else has one.
Okay. And then as far as, when we think, there's still one, you know, still a DAT team. They will be dividing their time. How do we, like, how do I ask this question succinctly?
I kind of know where you're going.
What won't, what won't the DAT teams do? Or how will they do what they do today differently to make sure they can account for the GVRS model?
That, that is going to be the collaboration, that we are going to rely heavily on Major Velti and his relationships with the districts. He's already proven that by winning over the, the two districts that we're in now. So what happens is the, the ma, the district action team still works for the major of the district. They still have district priorities. So they're still going to have to do some of the stuff that the major wants. But they work in collaboration with GVRS as to see what they can do to support GVRS and what they can't do. Some things, sometimes they're going to have to do the district needs. But the district commanders are fully engaged to know that we need to have this. This, this is the, the crime plan for the city, the mayor's crime plan, our strategy. This is what we're going to do. The commissioner had a meeting at ComStat last week where he sat down and he, he made that very clear to every one of our commanders. This is the strategy. It's not an option. You, you don't get to not, you don't get to say, I'm not going to do it. So he made it very clear in ComStat that this is the strategy we're going to use. Everybody needs to buy into it, because it's going to be successful as we move across the city. So I think the collaboration with the Criminal Investigation Division, which oversees GVRS, and the district, which is overseen by, by Colonel Jones and Colonel Brown, and all of us talk every day. But I think the, the new major and new captain have already proven that they've built those relationships already. And they'll continue to build them as we move across the city.
I was going to say, and when we have those violence reviews, the group focus is really where, where the rubber meets the road when it comes to the strategy and the model. So GVRS and the district action teams are having that same conversation to say, who should be our priority and focus based on group and their violence? So when they come out, they now have a focus. Because what happens, we don't need our teams, you know, really just chasing some of the incidents and the violence that we have. We see it, we know it, but that may not be the one who is driving the violence, right? The, the goal with the, with this model is to focus on groups who are the main violence drivers for the area or the district, mainly the city, and make those extractions and build those, those strong cases and investigations. So that is where, you know, that, that collaboration really comes in, you know, in, in its best way, because they'll come out there together, the DAT team, and say, hey, listen, I think that with the incidents that we've had, or recent incidents that we've had, we probably should stay focused on this group. And that is actually the goal. The goal is to stay on that group, build an investigation, a case, but actually to make the extraction. Now also, who is willing to take some of the, the services that's there? Because we, we look at everybody. It's not just, only just the violence drivers. But the other is to connect, you know, the group also to services, because some are willing to do that. Some are involved in some of the criminal, criminal activity, maybe due to other sets of circumstances. But that is also the goal as well, to connect them to supporting services and anything else that we can, that doesn't only lead them into the criminal justice pathway.
Just to reiterate the level of focus that's needed for this, as of yesterday's meeting in the Western District, you know, this is high-level buy-in from us. The, the Colonel was there, I was there, both DAT teams were there, the GV unit. It's, it's that kind of collaboration of working, working together. Who's the group? Who's the target? Who's going to take the enforcement? And having a robust conversation of where we need to be going forward. So it's high-end buy-in, buy, buy-in by all of us.
Got it. So if I, if I had to summarize what I'm hearing from you guys, it sounds like the DAT teams typically were used by majors to respond to spikes that they may, they may see, whether it be carjacking, shootings, burglaries, whatever it may be. Now we're leveraging some of that DAT team time to focus on group violence reduction.
That is exactly what's going on. So they'll still have to do, you know, the district commander has crimes that he has to address. He has community issues that he, because everything is not crime. Sometimes it's community. It's speeding along a certain intersection or whatever. It's a little bit of that, but there's a collaboration, a talk between Major Velti and that district's commander to say, hey, look, we need some love over here. Can I utilize the DAT team for a couple of days? And then they can go back to something. So it's a give and take on both sides in reference to achieving the ultimate goal for public safety.
Yeah, if I could here, sir, if we could advance a couple of slides into the appendix section, I think that your, your question is really driving to capacity and making sure that we're able to truly serve as Baltimore. Want to remind folks that we were really intentional, again, about not outstripping the capacity of our partners as it currently exists. And so in addition to looking at the totality of our gun violence in the city, also making sure that we looked at the infrastructure. So we looked at the number of district action teams that we had by district to make sure that we weren't pulling immediately from districts that only had one, right? And so you'll see in green, the Southwestern, the Central, the Eastern, all have B sixes. They also all have two DAT teams. Along with that, we spoke about making sure that we're able to successfully integrate the district resources into a management structure. So in partnership with Monsey and BPD, there are weekly action plans that get taken into account with regard to what the deployment is going to look like for DATs. And the district action teams that have been assigned to GVRS as, you know, ancillary support to the core GV, dedicate up to about eighty percent of their time on a regular basis to this work, depending on what's coming in and out of those weekly action plan meetings.
Got it. Thank you. That helps a lot. Okay, the other question I have is, I want to go back to, what slide was this? It was the slide talking about the resources. It was the slide talking about the resources that we're offering to folks who participated in the programming, and, you know, the question that dawned upon me is, what are we helping people work toward? Because in my mind, I see this as, we know there are groups of folks who are on the wrong path. We want to steer them in a better direction. So, how do we know, once they've reached some threshold for which we are satisfied, that they can be self-sufficient? And how do we measure that here? I don't know if that is captured here, but...
I would offer that it's not necessarily measured in this particular set of data points, and, you know, in my, in my very hippie-like, sunshiny and roses-like personality, I would say that what we're looking for is self-actualization. We're looking for folks to get to a place of sustainability. We're looking for Kikos, right? And for folks who haven't seen or heard Kiko's story, he did share just a few weeks ago that he's been working for six months straight for the first time ever in his life as a thirty-six-year-old, and how excited and proud it makes him that his children are waving goodbye to him from the window to go to work and to come home instead of him walking to go and stand on a corner. And so, I would offer that those are the types of successes we're looking for. We're also measuring things like, are people safe, alive, and free? And they get to dictate what safety feels like to them. We can measure if they're alive and/or if they're incarcerated, and at the same, in the same token, we want to make sure that we're providing the level of support until they feel like they can sustain it on their own. That doesn't mean that resources are indefinite, right? So, we are not providing emergency relocation services over and over and over again. We are not paying rent indefinitely for folks, but we are making sure that we do the work in partnership with ROKA and YAP and other community-based partners and city agencies to create pathways to success and pathways that ensure that we can truly keep people safe, alive, and free.
Yeah, I think in your description of Kiko, I think the answer was there, something concrete, something measurable, and it may be at six months in a job or one year in a job, some point at which we can say, we have successfully taken this person from a life on the streets that is potentially violent, and we know that for a fact, and is now a contributing person to society, and although they may still interface with the city in some way, shape, or form, we are very happy with the trajectory that they're on.
I would offer that that would be a midterm goal for us, not necessarily an impact. I mean, even from a measurement perspective, our partner, ROKA, is looking at its engagement with young people up to four years, right? So, they are looking at, where is the young person after two years? And because that is the stabilization time for them, and then where are those young people after four years? And so, while we haven't necessarily settled on two, three, or four years, I would offer that anything that's lesser than two years, I would consider a midterm impact.
Yeah, I, hopefully, we get there and see some successes there. And then I think the other piece that I think we don't know from this data is people who have relapsed in some ways, either they were involved in something, I guess maybe that's technically the arrest if they're abus, or maybe it's not even necessarily an arrest, you know, some other issue that comes up. I don't know if we captured that in some way, shape, or form.
We do. It goes back to those data points that I shared with you about safe, alive, and free, and we can absolutely provide that information to you all. We can share with you all if there are folks who have been engaged by our service providers, if they're still alive, if they are incarcerated or if they are not. This is something that I specifically asked the deputy to begin to track very early on so that we knew what the real impact was that we were having and whether or not we needed to differentiate our engagement model in cases where we were seeing any sort of trends or themes emerging around relapse.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. Questions from my colleagues, Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On that same slide, I was surprised that housing isn't a higher percentage of need, and I would imagine that that's because it's the gap that you talked about where it's like hard to find housing, right? Is that, is that what that is, or they are, they're actually okay in their living space?
So, I'm going to ask the deputy to talk about this more specifically, but I want us to understand that there's a differentiation between emergency relocation, AKA, in order for me to stay alive, you have to move me now, versus housing assistance. When you're ready, sir.
So, when we're talking about safety and housing, we're talking about two different types. So, the first is emergency housing, where we're putting people up in a hotel because they're right now in danger of getting hurt or killed. We also have long-term safety, if they need to transition to an apartment or something like that for their safety. We can't find another location, whether it be a relative or whatnot. So, we track that. They also earn through certain activities stipends, which is meant as a tool to promote, get them to a place of self-sustainment, and part of that would be like filling out job applications, engaging in transitional employment, taking part in an educational program, or getting their driver's license, and all of that is meant to promote them to get to a place of self-sufficiency so they can take care of their housing. Does that answer your question?
Take care of their housing themselves instead of us providing a housing assistance stipend, yeah.
Got it. So, it's measured in terms of, you know, they are working towards it, they're getting these things like an ID and all of these different things, but then they're able to say and finally have the wage or the stipend or whatever to be able to go ahead and get into housing.
Yes.
And as the deputy alluded to, there are some cases where we're able to relocate folks into living with relatives or moving out of state somewhere else, and so that emergency relocation is accounted for in the eight percent that's documented in the Western District slide.
Gotcha. And then the housing assistance is like, you know, you're just helping, somebody's working towards it, but maybe they needed like security deposit or something like that. Is that what that is?
So, when we're talking about, yes, it could be something like that, or they need, and that always takes the form of stipends because what we're trying to do is encourage people to be self-supporting. So, that's a yes to its stipends, and the stipends are used to help support them in finding housing.
Right, so where, what we're doing in terms of like the emergency relocation is where we would be paying their rent and the security deposit because we need to.
Yes.
Whereas, the housing assistance is more like they're moving in that direction to go ahead and get stable housing, and we're, we might have helped them with one piece. But that eventually, I mean, I'd be interested, you may not measure this, but I'd be interested to see, you know, obviously, you know, maybe somebody was living at home with all their siblings and stuff, and through the program, they're getting self-sustaining, and then they're going into housing, right? That's different than the relocation part, so...
Yes.
Okay, yeah, it would be interesting to see like over time, as we're dealing the one-year, two-year, three-year, because we're tracking people, which is important, more than one year, you know, how that, how that plays out. So, okay, thanks for the explanation. I appreciate that. That was my only question. Thanks.
Councilwoman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Madam Director and team. You know, again, want to acknowledge the decline in homicides and shootings from this year to last year, and, yeah, it's important to acknowledge, and at the same time, feel a degree of tension between the numbers that have trended well, but also knowing that we are still losing far too many of our neighbors to gun violence in this city. And also knowing that I think most folks don't feel safe in Baltimore, or many Baltimoreans still do not feel safe in Baltimore. What I think is important about the work that you all have been doing is, I think it proves a theory that Mayor Scott and many of us have, and you as well, that when we say criminal justice and safe, public safety isn't just about police, that it's not just about police, that to your point, it's about keeping people not only safe but also free. And I think that the continuity, sticking with that strategy, is really important, and is not something I've seen in my time in Baltimore. We tend to lurch from strategy to strategy. We tend to, when folks start to feel a perception of less safety, we go back to some of the practices that may actually have landed us in the current predicament that we're in. So, I think you all owning the strategy and then scaling it and continuing to stand behind it, I think is incredibly important, and I think that more needs to be done to communicate it publicly. I think these hearings are a good forum for this engagement, but it's one of those things where if Baltimoreans don't see and feel and touch and smell a thing, then it doesn't really exist in their minds. And I'm not sure that if I went out and asked fifteen people randomly in our city, "Hey, what's GPRS and how's it going?", they would know what those letters mean. So, my question is, how are we communicating this both within the districts that you've already been working in and then those that you haven't? Because representing Southeast, most folks don't know what a GPRS is, and I think it's important, if this is going to be Baltimore's strategy, primary strategy for reducing violence, that people at the street level really understand it and can support it, especially as we think about heading into budget season and invariably the, what this will cost.
Thank you for your question. I'll start by saying that GPRS is one of a dual-pronged approach to the mayor's strategy associated with gun violence, with CVI being a very close partner. Your point is well-taken, and so, over the past few months, we have been really intentional. A brochure has been created that covers what GPRS is and what it is not, what the partnership looks like, and has begun to be distributed in the Western District as well as the Southwestern District and in other community forums. The Mayor's Office of Neighborhoods has partnered with us, given their reach across the entirety of the city, and often stops by our office to pick up those brochures so that we're getting that communication out broad and wide. In addition to that, we just partnered with BPD and the State's Attorney's Office to release a video on BPD's YouTube page with regard to what GPRS is and how it's evolved since the demonstration project. It featured our technical advisor really explaining what the strategy is and how we know it works when implemented with fidelity, and also highlights what we've seen it yield us to date. Had a recent conversation with the Mayor's Office of Multicultural Affairs with regard to translating that brochure into other languages, and have identified what the next four languages are that that translation needs to occur in. And we've participated a few times with the Police Commissioner in his monthly meetings with the CRC Chairs. We actively participate in community meetings, and we still have more to do. So, I would offer, it's not an or proposition. You're absolutely right that we've, we've got to make sure that even with the efforts that we've undertaken around communication strategy, that we're doubling down on that because we are in the middle of getting through our first third, if you will, of the districts that we'll be implementing into, and we want to make sure that Baltimore fully understands what the strategy is as a CityWAT approach.
No, I appreciate that, and, you know, like I said, I think too often, we, as a city, have sort of gone back and forth on our policing strategy and have, you know, overemphasized police as the only tool to drive down violence, and I think it has been to our detriment. I think we have placed simply too much burden on one agency, and so, the shift, I think, is important culturally for Baltimore, and I hope that we can continue to communicate the value of the approach and not lose that communications piece because I think it's important. My second question is, I remain concerned about gaps in victim services. This is an issue that I know every agency in this room deals with, State's Attorney, BPD, MONC, the Health Department, and so on. Director Jackson, you and I have had a couple of conversations, as well as with your staff, about just needing to have a more streamlined process when we see someone get shot and killed, when we see a family that struggles with a family member that died of an overdose, for that family to know that, as a city, there is support and that we can help them, whether it's relocation money, whether it's funeral and burial, I think goes a really, really long way with a population that has been traumatized. And so, I was hoping to hear from you just kind of where you are, where we are, because I think that, that is a, just the victim services piece and the different pots of money that are out there and the, some of the confusion that I think victims sometimes experience with like who's there to help remains a challenge, and I'm curious, and I know this is something you've been working on, where we are with it.
Yeah, I'll start, and then we'll lean into my partners to chime in if I've left any holes here. I would say that the three agencies that are seated before you are partnering in ways that I've never seen before, not just since I've been the director of this agency, but in the entirety of my understanding of the political mechanism that is the city of Baltimore, and most certainly not in ways that would have benefited me when my son got shot. What I will say is that the State's Attorney has hired someone to administer victim services on that team, and that they have engaged in meetings with both BPD and with MONC victim services teams, that all three of these agencies, along with community-based partners like ROAR and our medical systems, participate regularly in victim service workgroup meetings with regard to what the provision of supports need to be. And while that initial workgroup is hyper-focused on gunshot victims so that we aren't victimizing victims for being shot, I am sure that it will expand into other types of victimization spaces. With regard to the point that you made around the differentiation of kind of where you go to, BPD currently has victim services staff members that support our GPRS districts in addition to the Eastern District, and the mayor announced a few weeks ago, and even at his State of the City address, the, his intention to make sure that that unit is appropriately funded as GPRS continues to grow. MONC's victim services team has more than tripled since I've started, and we are absolutely providing supports, not just to gunshot victims, but obviously historically to intimate partner abuse victims, human trafficking victims, sexual assault victims. And we get called upon often by our partners at Baltimore City Public Schools. We've been called upon for the unfortunate event where we saw two young people get hit by a vehicle just a couple of days ago and are fully activated there. And so, I would offer that there is an ongoing conversation that happens to say, "Hey, this is in a GPRS district. Where are you on this? Do you need additional support, or do your advocates have this?" We get tagged in a lot. I'll let the State's Attorney talk about what they're building out right now, but I suspect that it will be very different than what we've seen in the past, given the introduction of bringing in methodologies around victim support that we see other jurisdictions in the state of Maryland having implemented that we didn't necessarily implement here before. Partners, if you have anything else to add? Thank you. So, to add to that, and thank you, Director Jackson, we have completely restructured our, what used to be the Victim Witness Unit within the State's Attorney's Office, it's now the Victim Witness Division. We have at least twenty-six victim witness coordinators, and a part of that implementation, which began on April seventeenth of this year, is that once we get every, all of the necessary pieces in place, every single circuit court case will be assigned a victim witness coordinator. The first point of contact after, of course, if it's in on view and police are involved, will be with our victim witness coordinator to reach out to if there is a victim in the case, or all of the witnesses in the case, to include the police officers, to make sure that, one, we have the necessary contact information for everyone...
we have the necessary contact information for everyone involved with the case and that that information is being translated properly and appropriately to the circuit court. And we are also working within the district courts as well to devise a plan that would be similar, where all of the cases would be assigned a victim witness coordinator. As far as our efforts related to victim services, we've hired a new division chief for the division and then also two team leads. One of them is overseeing the victim services side, which still continues to include the Family Bereavement Center. And then the other side is coordinating all of those victim witness coordinators. As far as the relocation services, we're revamping that part, which is going to be on the services side of victim witness. And we've been in discussions with the Police Department, with M O N C. We're also talking to the Sheriff's Department and other neighborhood partners, including our federal partners, to determine how we can identify, make sure we're identifying all of the gaps that previously existed and how we can fill in those gaps. So everything from victim relocation safety to also referring victims and/or witnesses and other people who might be indirectly related to a violent incident in the community to the appropriate partners so that everyone can be serviced appropriately.
Hi, I'm Amethis Spivak. I'm the Director of Administration and Really Special Initiatives, reporting to Deputy Commissioner Worley. So I do work with victim services. G V R S is part of my portfolio, as is community policing. So I've had an opportunity to work closely with Director Jackson and then a lot of the team here on the different projects that we've been discussing. So within victim services, we have had an opportunity to receive more funding. Thank you for those that approved our budget enhancement request. So right now, we do have five victim advocates. We will be hiring, so we have three vacancies with the new money that's coming in. We should have another three vacancies to fill. So there is a job posting if there's anybody looking for a job. And so in coordination with our partners, we have identified areas in which cross-agency coordination can really use and benefit from more collaboration. So while our agency has a very important role in responding to homicide and non-fatal shooting, victims are designated survivors. We acknowledge that there's a point before that where it's very necessary and we need to be very intentional of working with those that have been victimized in other ways. So Director Jackson mentioned, excuse me, she mentioned earlier about our cross-collaboration with Department of Juvenile Services, with D S S, with the school police, with other city agencies, with also just the, who is the individual that represents the school system? The Baltimore City Public School Systems have representatives there as well. So we identify those high-risk individuals, some of which may have been survivors of some sort of victimization that wouldn't necessarily have risen to our level. So where do we meet these individuals, where they're at? From very early on to when they're unfortunately that designated survivor or the survivor of a non-fatal shooting? What are the other crime types in which we can have folded into our victim services? So we do have a coordinator that's being trained up on human trafficking. We understand that's a very complex, repeated trauma experience. So we have to have a very specialized, trained person to do that work. And we already have, you know, city agencies. We have the Human Trafficking Council that we're really going to intentionally work collaboratively with as we expand to that crime type. With regards to the unfortunate accident with the two youth, our victim services is readily available there as well. The manager, she has a lot of experience. Our acting manager has a lot of experience working with individuals who have survived these types of accidents in North Carolina. So when she came here, she brought that wealth of expertise. We are looking to fold in our domestic violence victim advocates into one umbrella. So we're working much more comprehensive and cohesively, both for management and for training. But all of this, we understand at some point too, where we have stepped in, we do a handoff to the State's Attorney's Office because there are times, once the case moves forward, it's most appropriate that they work with their office. So how do we make sure we're intentionally working together? We're definitely working on all of those protocols, processes, leadership with M O N C, the State's Attorney's Office. I would say one of the most important things that we're really working on and we're working on today are those emergency relocations. So there is state funding that the State's Attorney's Office now has access to and we've worked together. But there are times that B P D needs to be able to make that quick action. So trying to work through the process, we're learning how to do that, working with the Board of Estimates. I know in the past, a challenge that we had was we would have to give the location of where the hotel is. And I see your face, it's not necessarily the best idea when you're relocating those that have their life threatened. And so also working with the Department of Housing. So we have one individual in our department. So we're working on expanding that and folding it into victim services. But how do we work more collaboratively with, you know, both when we get the, get it before the budget hearing and when we also work with housing to really make that emergency response more effective when they've been victims of crime? And then how do we work collaboratively with M O N C and the State's Attorney's Office?
No, I appreciate all of that. I think a few things. One, often find that when there is violence in my district, I end up being the conduit to the family and try to activate services and still feel confused about where I'm supposed to go and to which agency, which pot is available. And so one area I'd like to see us go is to really have some standard operating procedures and just clarity of sort of step A, step B, here's who we go through, here, these are the victim advocates that, you know, again, I think for all of us that sit here, when someone gets hurt, you feel both a sense of responsibility to the victim and also the victim's family. And so I think we're all, or at least speak for myself, happy to support in that way. But I think it needs to be more standardized and there needs to be from the administration and from the, you know, the agencies, just a clearer step-by-step process. And then the second thing I'll say is, I think there are some great community partners in this space that can be pulled in. I think about Lisa Moloch from Let's Thrive. I think about R O A R, who, again, I know many of you already work with. But I just think this is one of those areas where Baltimore has a wealth of community partners that are credible and that can help to support that work. And so bringing them in, making them a part of what we do and then supporting their work, I think is extremely important.
So I'll pass over to M O N C, but I will say the leadership under M O N C has been pivotal in helping us move in this direction. And so I will say, absolutely, we have the wealth of resources in this city. And it's been really refreshing to work with M O N C and the State's Attorney's Office leadership because we've identified that as well as issues that need to be worked on. And while we've made strides, always room for growth. But Director Jackson.
Yep. Agreed. It's one of the core charges of the Victim Services Work Group, creating standard operating procedures so that there is never a question with regard to an entry point, if you will, into the city with regard to direct service provision, either for a first-degree victim, a second-degree victim, tertiary victims, just based on our redefinition of what victimology and victimization looks like. What I will offer is this, given where B P D is with regard to victimizations, given where M O N C is with regard to victimizations in cases where your constituencies are coming directly to you and saying, hey, who do we go to? M O N C serves as that bridge. And in cases where M O N C, M O N C's internal processes would dictate that a handoff happens to B P D because of the level of victim services that they are providing, that that handoff would happen. I mean, we're having conversations cross-team every single day. I don't believe that victim services would naturally move from M O N C to the State's Attorney's Office without going through B P D, given that we're talking about enforcement and then talking about prosecution. And so that, that is the path that I see with regard to our role. With regard to the two community-based organizations that you shared, along with a whole host of others, we do consider those folks partners of the mayor's C V I ecosystem. They are very much a part of our discussions and get called into discussions quite frequently with regard to not just victim support, but total wraparound supports.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. As you guys were talking, I was totally in a different world. I'm sorry for a second. But it dawned on me, and going back to earlier parts of our conversation about how things are shaking out, I did a quick add-up of the, the slides that have the enforcement outcomes from the closed investigations. And it looks like there were about 65 people that were indicted. And putting that next to roughly the 74 folks who are receiving services, it's almost a 50-50 how people sort of pan out in this process, which I thought was pretty interesting, just is like basic data. You know, it's a flip of a coin how people decide, either you end up in jail or you take the services that we offer.
So I don't have that number in front of me or the split. But what I will say is what we consistently say. We will offer you a choice. The decision is yours to make and then the consequences will either be positive or punitive consequences. I will also say that Baltimore should be reminded that there are some cases where a law enforcement-only conversation is happening because a strategic investigation is happening. And so it would be disingenuous of us to say, hey, you want these services? And then turn around and arrest folks and then indict folks.
Not everybody gets the offer.
Right. Now, following that arrest indictment and any subsequent incarceration or punitive outcomes, M O N C is here to say, what do you need from a rehabilitative perspective in partnership with D P S D S? So we do go behind the wall and have conversations with folks as a part of that partnership and relationship. But at the end of the day, we'd like to be able to say, here are some services, don't you want to take them? Did you have something to add?
Yes, I just wanted to be very clear that when we're doing a direct communication with somebody, it's not take services or you're going to be arrested. Right? It is, you need to stop the violence. That's the mandate. You don't have to take those services, but they're there for you. We want to help you. So I don't want anybody to be confused. It's not, we're offering you services or you're going to be arrested. That is not what it is. It is, you will stop the violence or you will, there are accountability and consequences.
It's the communication first of the community norm, right? Of what the behavior should look like in order to keep everybody safe, alive and free, and making sure that folks hear from what we classify as community moral voices, but I would say are voices of influence because they either have your lived experience and/or they're taking care of someone's child or grandchildren because of similar lived experience and using those voices to say, here are all the reasons you need to stop.
Yeah. I just thought it was a really interesting kind of shakeout of the numbers. So I appreciate you guys.
It's a stark difference than what we've seen in the past iterations, which is a heavier skew on the side of law enforcement than service offering. And I think that what we heard when we did forensic interviews with folks that have been a part of the work is that that's one of the reasons why it wasn't successful the last two times around, because we didn't deliver on the commitment to opportunity.
The services weren't there. And then the last question I have, I was sort of looking through Slide 30, looking at the expansion timeline, noting that we are in Q2 of 2023. And it looks like we were expecting to be in the Central District. Have we expanded yet or is that, I know we're still working out.
So I would say that what we've done in the Central District in order to prepare for expansion is that we've had four community meetings around G V R S. So we're laying the groundwork in the Central and already started meeting with community members to the council members' point around education, what it is and what it's not. We're also being really intentional to make sure that our community partners have the resources that they need in order to expand into those districts, given the numbers that we would see growing, building those community relationships with those that we know are close to folks who are at risk is what's happening. As it stands right now, we are still on target to move into the Central District by the end of the second quarter. And in, in any cases where that would change, we would make sure that we would let folks know publicly.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Any further questions from the committee? I've gotten them myself. I want to thank you both, all, really for the great work you guys are doing. I am encouraged by the progress that we've made, both through the G V R S program, but then I think also broadly across the city. Things seem to be going in the right direction. I'll knock on that just in case. But, you know, I think we still have a lot of work to do. We touched on some of those pieces, both on the clearance side and, yeah. So appreciate you guys. With that, this hearing is in recess.